Okay. Good evening. It's six o'clock and welcome to the March 4th meeting of the governing body. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Hiller. No, see, Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala. Yeah, we've got a new man. Hello, Christina. Give your attention to her who will provide the invocation. Stand as you are able and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to read a poem tonight by the American poet Jan Richardson, who is also an ordained Methodist minister. The title of the poem is "How the Light Comes." "I cannot tell you how it comes. What a... Is that it is more ancient than imagining, that it travels across an astounding expanse to reach us, that it loves searching out what is hidden, what is lost, what is forgotten or in peril or in pain, portraying the edges of form, for shining forth through the eye, the hand, the heart. I cannot tell you how the light comes, but that it does, that it will, that it works its way into the deepest dark that enfolds you, though it may seem long ages in coming or arrive in a shape you did not foresee. And so, may we this day turn ourselves towards it. May we lift our faces to let it find us. May we bend our bodies to follow the arc it makes. May we open and open more and open still to the blessed light that comes." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I missed the calling to order, so we are now. If, Megan, if you'll call the roll, please.
Okay. Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Alcala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kel.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Ann Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to appointments. Madam Tork.
All right, we have a board appointment recommending the appointment of Jennifer Getz to the Downtown Business Improvement District Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term ending October 31st, 2026.
Okay, you've heard the appointment is ready. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second by Deputy Mayor. If you'll call the roll, please.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Miller.
An excited yes.
Ann Dobler.
Yes.
All right, we have nine. It carries.
Okay. Well, thank you. Jennifer is in the audience. If I ask her to stand so we can recognize you. And thank you for your service. Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we'll move on to presentation. Madam Tork.
We have a presentation on the legislative mid-session update.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Whitney Dameron, our city lobbyist, will lead us through this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body, and City Manager and staff. Whitney Dameron, contract lobbyist, City of Topeka. As Amanda will attest to, you've had a busy year. So far, it's not over. We've got a few more weeks to go. Last week, we had a House of Origin deadline, which is kind of the halfway mark of the session. We've got this week and next week of legislative hearings and then the following week, the week of the 17th. St. Patrick's Day will begin the Second House of Origin Deadline Week, working towards a first adjournment of March 28th. And then legislators return April 10th for a scheduled three-day veto session. So the end is near, so to speak, but a lot left to be done. The session has been rather compact this year because of an accelerated schedule from the House and Senate leadership. The session started about the middle of January, on January 13th. Last year, it started on the 8th, so there's about a week, week's worth of work we lost. And then it ends about a week early as well. So compressed timelines for bill introductions, hearings and action quite a bit and it created kind of a scramble with some legislation that's out there. Last session, or last year, the governing body adopted its legislative agenda and we pursued several bills on the city's behalf. The first one being the housing inspection legislation, which we took to the House Local Government Committee and we've had support from the city staff, from Amanda testifying, your city attorney, as well as Councilmember Valdivia Alcala. And then Kerry Higgins testified on that bill. We had opposition in the House from the Landlords Association, the Realtors Association, and then a Topeka landlord. We were able to mollify some of those concerns with amendments to the bill that really applied to the City of Topeka, which was our intent all along. The way it's drafted now would have a five-year sunset and apply to HUD properties. So that bill came out of the House pretty strong, 111 to 12. We had hearings on the bill this morning in the Senate Local Government Committee. The landlords came in neutral this time, said they're okay with the bill. We've addressed some of their concerns. The Realtors didn't come in at all, so that was helpful. And then a Topeka landlord came in again, and I don't know if that was helpful or hurtful. But nonetheless, the chair said the bill looks pretty good to her and they're going to take it up on Thursday. So we should know where that bill goes this week. Hopefully, no amendments and we'll just keep making progress and move it on through the process to the governor instead of some of this back and forth that ends up with legislation that gets amended. They also brought forth the law enforcement age legislation to allow someone who's age 20 to enter essentially police training. They still could not become a commissioned law enforcement officer until they reached the age of 21. Chief Vallejo testified in front of the House Federal and State Affairs Committee, only confere. We had reached out previous to the hearings dating actually back to last year with representatives of the law enforcement associations. And then in January, to the Law Enforcement, Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center to see if they had concerns or recommendations to the bill. They chose not to make any. Our bill came out of the House on a vote of 97 to 24. There were some concerns raised on the floor that this is more complicated than what the City of Topeka wants to make it out to be. We have to amend some other statutes. We have to do some other things to the bill. And I think, quite frankly, some people were tuned into the bill and told, "We don't think you should like this." That may or may not be accurate, but... So we had a conference call with some of those entities, called Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center. They provided some suggestions and whether that's something we can incorporate and move forward with. Yet this session remains to be seen. The bill's in Senate judiciary and that is a challenging committee to get a hearing and to move things forward sometimes, especially if we have some resistance. And I think if we have resistance from those entities and the law enforcement groups, the bill's a challenge as written until we address those concerns. So that's something Amanda and I are talking about as well. What's occupied a lot of our time for the last probably 10 days was the public funds bill. Bankers from the Kansas Bankers Association, Community Bankers Association, credit unions would like to get greater access to municipal funds. And they would like to get access to those funds at a rate lower than a market rate, which is the way they introduced the bill, that they could access certain funds that would be managed by the, or at least held by the Treasurer's Office, State Treasurer's Office, and could loan those out. And their borrowing rate would be a half a percent lower essentially than what the city could obtain on its own for a market the way the bill is proposed. That would cost the City of Topeka, was estimated $1.7 million a year. So obviously, we didn't like that bill very well. A number of other cities were in the same boat. Amanda took into studying the bill and got into Public Finance 101. And I think she graduated at a much higher level than 101 and kind of became, quite frankly, the lead negotiator from the municipal side, working with the league. Spencer was, Councilmember Duncan was obviously involved. But spent a lot of time on it. We had suggested that the parties of interest should get together and just try to work it out, which ultimately happened with the city's financial advisor was involved. Amanda was at that meeting. And Executive Director of the League of Kansas Municipalities on one side, bankers and others on the other. And the state treasurer kind of in the middle. And they put together a bill that I think everyone can live with, that advanced out of committee earlier this week, yesterday. And it's probably in shape to where it doesn't have any further problems going forward now that the municipalities have said we're okay with the bill. First thing to go was the rate reduction. And then they negotiated some other aspects of the bill to make sure that municipalities had an adequate amount of surety with these funds being borrowed by various lending institutions. Yesterday was a good day so far for Metropolitan Topeka Airport Authority. We were successful and we, I worked with the authority as well as obviously City of Topeka. But the Senate Committee on Commerce added $15.5 million to the commerce budget that will now go to the Full Ways and Means Committee next week. That effort was led in committee by the three members from the Shawnee County delegation who are on that committee, Senator Dietrich, Senator Cluus, and Senator Titus. So they worked very well together and very strongly in support of that amendment. It's a long ways from being done. It's a challenging budget year and that will be tough to keep. But there's an effort underway to try to do the best we can to support that. At least it was progress coming out of the committee. Some of the other bills we've testified on, I think to date, we've testified for, against, or neutral, mainly against, probably 20 bills or more. We've tracked 30 bills or more. And we've spent a lot of time in the local government committees, the tax committees, judiciary and the like. The subjects have included economic development, extraterritorial voting. So if you live outside the city, you could vote in city elections. Doesn't seem like a good idea, but some people like that. Fast-track permitting, fees for copies, Heartland Flyer funding, passenger rail service, housing inspection legislation, as mentioned earlier, law enforcement age requirements, Low Impact Home Business Act, open records, planning and zoning authority in a three-mile area, reimbursement for ride-away costs, housing tax credits, and so forth. So lots, lots to dislike, some to like. Again, the end is near. No major damage has been done yet. And we're hopeful on the bills we're working on. I'd be happy to take your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dameron? Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Whitney, just a curiosity question. The tenure bill for university professors, is that in any way going to impact Washburn University if it passes?
I think it's targeted at the Regents Institution, so I don't think, don't think I say that specifically. I think, you know, that issue was somewhat on life support and then the Chair of Judiciary has tried to resurrect it. It would be difficult to get to the governor's desk and even more difficult to get in the statute book, I would suggest. But yeah, it made for an interesting hearing.
Yeah.
Certainly got a lot of people's attention.
All bad. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just more a comment. Whitney, I just got to say, you know, always been kind of dubious of lobbyists, but I was so impressed with you and continue to be impressed with you. And I have really enjoyed working with you and working with additional city staff. Your forthcoming with information, giving us a pulse on where everything is. And I just hope that this is, you know, a sign of things to come with us working more closely together in the future. So I just wanted to say thank you and thank you to everybody for their continued hard, hard work in the, going to the legislature this session. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question on what your sense is on how the Heartland Flyer is doing.
It's a challenge to get it funded. I mean, that, that has just been that challenge of getting the commitment for the funding to move the bill forward. Ran into resistance certainly in the House. Passed last year in the Senate quite easily. Went to the House and the House refused to take it up until there was more clarity on long-term funding and feasibility for the project. And I haven't seen that change.
Okay, just to, just, I should have clarified for anybody listening. That's the train service that's being proposed that would come through Topeka and end up going through Newton to Texas and connecting us up in ways that train travel used to be. So, thank you.
And it becomes kind of a multi-state issue too, is what the other states are doing. And is everyone kind of being in sync to make something happen? And if Oklahoma doesn't go or Texas doesn't go, then why would we go? It's not necessarily a train to nowhere, but it's...
Just wanted to check.
A challenge.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Two quick comments, Mayor. I know Whitney and Amanda lead a lot of this, but a lot of times what they'll do, which is the right approach, is drag some of our other employees in and say, "Hey, I need you to stand up there because they need to hear from you and if they have questions, you're uniquely qualified to answer them." And so I just, they all kind of know who they are. I don't have to list their names, but I just want to, they deserve a shout out for showing up, doing it, even if we had to, you know, it's not their favorite thing to do. And sometimes those committees can be rough. They don't care who they are. They're a little meat and death lobbyists, but they sometimes... So I just want to say thank you to all the other staff members who have been up there so far this session because it really does make a difference for them to hear from them and not just the same of us anymore. The second thing I just want to comment on, there was an editorial in the Capital Journal the other day. And it was from one of, somebody who does a think tank on tax policy here in Kansas. And I think it started out with basically the Capitol is being flooded by city and county lobbyists fighting against property tax reform. And I guess what I want the citizens of Topeka to know is, first of all, that is not accurate on any level. In fact, and I'm not just saying this because I'm one of those city lobbyists who, who does this, but I actually think this legislature will tell you this year that cities, including the City of Topeka, some of the things we put in our legislative agenda are being adopted into some of those bills because of the work we're doing as it relates to property tax. Some of the bills are actually better than they've ever been. There's some that cities can get behind, including Topeka. And so I really just want our citizens to know that the City of Topeka is not fighting against property tax reform at the Capitol. We've been pretty supportive of some of the efforts they're doing and we will continue to do that. And so that was those, that sort of irked me a little because it's not the narrative, definitely not the narrative of this city. And I just want everyone to know that. So thank you, Mayor.
I appreciate that. And following along, the comments from Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala. It's been impressive, I think, for me to see Topeka have a real core team. And that core team includes you, Whitney, city attorney, and certainly Councilman Duncan, who works through the league. I think that it's a respected group up there. And I think they approach a lot of their testimony very tactically and strategically, as the councilman mentioned, bringing in those staff members and others who can support our efforts. So I think that the city is getting further ahead than it has in the past with regards to setting our legislative agenda, following it, and keeping a core team in place to help to continue to pursue it. And thank you very much for the work that you do, Whitney. Deputy Mayor.
Kind of a question for you and also a statement on this. What, what is the legislature doing right now for when it comes to child predators and sex trafficking? Because right now, it seems like we turn on the news every single day and there's local stories happening every single day. And it's getting very frustrating. I'm sorry, I'm a little worked up and it's not directed at you, sir. It's this, this subject has been very worked up. And I believe as a city, we need to start taking the forefront on this to make it part of our agenda, to then get the other cities involved in this. Can we just start cracking down on this? And I've worked at a prison. I've, I've seen what kind of treatment people get. I've seen what kind of sentences people get for 10 years of, of child, child predators. They get two years for doing it for 10 years. So we, as a city, I think we need to get behind this as being one of the lead cities in being the capital city, to really push an agenda. Because you look at WIW, KSNT, whatever, the last three, four days, there's, there's been articles on this lately. And I honestly think we need to really start pushing this if the state's not doing anything about it.
I would say that's not an issue that I've, I've been involved with. I, you know, I, I'm happy to take a look, quite frankly, of what might be in this year and what's happening. I haven't read anything that's kind of risen to that level of being something that's been in the news. I know historically, going back to Attorney General Derek Schmidt, they were involved with human trafficking and had some legislation passed on that. And so there have been changes to increasing enforcement for human trafficking laws in the last five, six years that have come up. But I can't tell you anything right now that's going on. There may be...
I think we need, as a city, we need to start working that for next year's agenda and put that on there because this, it slaps on the wrists for a lot of these people. And it's, it's damaging a lot, it damages a lot of people that are around it. And not just the direct victim, but everyone around it. It builds, it makes a lot of trust issues for people and creates a lot of long-term aftermath problems. And honestly, I'm just sick and tired of seeing it in the news every single day. We're not doing enough to make it where people are like, "Well, let me think about this for a second." It's, like I said, I, I've worked in the prison system. I've seen people with so light of sentences that it's disgusting. And we, I think this needs to be on our agenda next year as probably pretty much our number one topic.
Deputy Mayor, as the city prepares its legislative agenda, there's ample opportunity to bring subjects up like this so we can, in fact, as a body endorse them or make sure that we're going down the path that we all want to go as a city. I would agree that any kind of actions that we can do to protect the children in the, in the state is something we should look into. But we'll have plenty of time and keep that thought in your mind. And when the appropriate time comes around and we're able to build our agenda, then we'll do so.
So engaging the Shawnee County District Attorney and the Association of District Attorneys, prosecutors and the like would be part of that process because they would, would be the ones who would probably come in with the expertise and know-how on prosecution history and so forth.
Okay. Anything further for Whitney? Thank you again for your work, Whitney.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have a good night.
Okay, we have another presentation. Madam Tork.
We have the presentation on the 2025 strategic goals and priorities.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, in this presentation, we'll be discussing ten strategic goals that the city seems to be focused on in FY 2025. These goals were developed based upon priorities that I've heard from this, from several members of the governing body as well as the public. The list that is before you this evening has been vetted with the governing body as well as with our department directors. Feedback from the department directors led to additional departmental goals underneath the seven focus areas that we'll be discussing this evening. Please note that this is not an exhaustive list of everything that we'll be working on this year. These are just going to be main focal points that, that, that we will be working on over the next nine months. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Amaya Carpenter, who is interning with us from Washburn University, and Emily Velazquez, who's interning with us through K-State's Public Administration, Master's Public Administration Program. With that, ladies.
Hello, everyone. Like City Manager said, over the past couple of weeks, we've been gathering information and these are the seven focus areas that everyone has identified. So the first one is quality of life. And the first goal with that is to strengthen code compliance team and the inspection process. The second one is to streamline and improve the customer service experience through a consolidated 3-1-1 call center. Other departmental goals are the 3-1-1 call center, the See Clicks Fix, and the SMS texting service with the community engagement and policing departments to implement a new ABL system with a forward-facing public interface from Public Works and to support legislation that increases inspections of residential properties that receive public funding with a legal department. The next one is inclusive communities. And the first goal is to establish a Department of Inclusive Communities and determine program goals. And with that, planning for inclusive communities to lead the National Night Out in 2025. Other goals is to strengthen community partnerships to foster inclusivity and engagement with the Police Department and Community Engagement Department. Thirdly, we have housing and economic development. The first goal is to activate the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Economic Development Funds. The second is to sell Hotel Topeka. The third is to develop digital, a digital kiosk program. And other goals are to pursue, pursue opportunities to grow the tax base and review the city's current rehabilitation, social service, and financial housing programs for optimal effectiveness. And those are both from the Planning and Development Department. And then fourth, we have homelessness. And that is to move forward at least one homelessness initiative with a one-stop shop, a low-barrier shelter, or a tiny home community. And then just continue collaboration with Built for Zero and all hands-on-deck initiatives.
Continuing would be the budget. It would be to develop a sustainable budget for fiscal year 2026 and beyond. This would include evaluate options to increase revenue to strengthen the city's long-term financial position and to evaluate cost of services with key department heads. Next would be public safety. Within public safety, the goals are to develop a violent crime reduction plan with the public engagement component. Other goals would be strengthening external law enforcement partnerships with the Police Department, form partnerships with research institutions to enhance policing practices and address public safety challenges. And the Empower Her program, which is a self-defense course being offered to the community and high schools across the city, which this is within the Police Department and inclusive communities. To continue is strengthen the partnership with Valeo to advance our mental health court and collaborate with county and state probation to better utilize resources within the municipal court, convert to digital ticketing within the municipal court, and continue to certify additional personnel to the ALS, ALS level thereby, thereby increasing ALS delivery across a larger area of the city within the fire department. Next is infrastructure, to continue delivery of annual CIP projects and maintain infrastructure, enhance stakeholder and community communication of annual CIP programs within Public Works and Communications, and continue delivery of new fire apparatus through CIP to improve fleet reliability and reduce maintenance and repair costs within the fire department. And this concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions on the presentation that was just made? Anyone online? Don't see any. Okay, okay, now I see you. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you. I think that this is, and it's my bad for not saying something earlier, but I think that this is, you know, a, a good first start when looking at the strategic goals. I think with the empowerment that you're going to be doing with her empowerment, you're stating that that is a self-defense program for women. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. My suggestion too, because I think that's a fantastic idea. I think that we should also consider including something in there that talks with the young men and college-age men and high school men, whether that be with, you know, understanding, communicating... men and high school men, whether that be with, you know, understanding communication skills, restorative justice issues, anger management, you know, all of those things because we know that how the levels of violence continue to be perpetrated upon women and children, most often at the hands of males. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager?
If I could just respond to that, most of these things, actually, all of these things that we're doing are going to be done within the FY 2025 budget. So that type of program, Councilwoman, I think that we could probably evaluate for future inclusion. But again, we're really working to, within the budget that we have established for this year. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. Overall, I like it. It's a lot of stuff. And whether delivering the CIP program is a strategic goal or just something we do every day as part of our work, I think we could talk more about that. I have a little bit of concern, on one hand, we're talking about developing a sustainable budget; on the other hand, we're talking about establishing a whole new department. I don't know what Department of Inclusive Communities means. I don't know what that looks like. Seems like if it's necessary, it could be an office within an existing department. You know, I mean, that's bureaucracy. Once you start establishing departments, then it's department heads and second-tier management folks. And right now, we just, we just can't afford much of that. So we have to be very careful what exactly we do at that. My only comment, I know we'll discuss it during budget time as well. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just address that. So the thought behind this, and we can get more into the details, is to really combine our existing DEI efforts along with our Community Engagement Department. And by doing this, we'd actually eliminate one of the executive positions. So definitely look forward to those discussions. But as noted in here, I kind of need to get that going, especially if we're going to have that team taking on the National Night Out events. So I just wanted to give that extra context. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions on the presentation? I'm encouraged to see that we're still have on our list that activating the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and then also picking up this, hopefully, the speed on how we can establish that one-stop shop as well for the homelessness. So I'm glad that we keep that on there and have picked at least one or two to really focus on and get them moving forward. Any further questions? Thank you both for your presentation. Okay, on the agenda, item number four, Madam Plurk.
Item 4A, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 11, 2025, and February 18, 2025, and there are no applications.
Okay. Heard the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Miller. If you call the roll, please.
All right. Councilmember Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
Okay, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to agenda number five. Our action items listed, Madam Plurk.
A is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler amending the 2023 to 2032 CIP and the 2023 to 2025 CIP to revise the five funding allocations for project number 121019 for the 2023 Bridge and Maintenance Program.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Steve Groh, our Public Works Director, will lead us to this item.
Hey, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Governing Board. The 2023 Bridge Maintenance Funds were used to pay for the biannual bridge inspections and were to fund the Branner Bridge repairs in the spring of last year, but this project was delayed to 2025 due to the River Road project. We're looking for your permission to amend the CIP to use those dollars to do a project this year.
Any questions for Steve?
Move approval.
Okay. Move to approve by Councilman Dobler, second by Deputy Mayor, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Move to action item 5B. Madam Plurk?
B is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project number 121019, Phase 4, for repairs to the Branner Street Trafficway Bridge.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Steve Groh, our Public Works Director, will lead us to this item.
Steve?
This is to do some bridge repairs to the Branner Bridge Trafficway. It's doing some concrete roadway panel replacements also. We will be having a public open house on March 17 from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Oakland Community Center to discuss this project with the public. We're looking for your approval to commence with this project.
Any questions for Steve?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Valdivia Akla?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks to the PWI Committee for pushing all of this through because definitely Branner Bridge is in need of some TLC. So there's no other comments, I would move to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve, is there a second? Second by Councilman Banks. If you'll call the roll, please.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Councilwoman Heller?
Just a quick comment, a heads up to council members. This got discussed the other day in the Polquency Vida Act meetings. Understand that this bridge, it got delayed, it had to be. It's going to be done this summer at the same time as the Topeka Boulevard Bridge is out. And there will be other stuff going on in the downtown area. So just be aware for yourself and for constituents and public questions. Kansas Avenue Bridge will be open, but it's going to be tricky to get around. People will have to get through and take the River Road out or take the Sardine Bridge to get to Oakland, or else go all the way out to East Topeka and come across Golden.
I think Steve kind of addressed that, when you have that public meeting, there'll be some really, some real awareness about how it's going to affect the traffic flow there.
Yes, sir, there'll be a lot of public outreach on this project just to minimize disruptions.
Thank you.
Move to action item C. Madam Plurk?
C is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 701049 and 2813, Phase 5, for street and utility improvements on southwest Topeka Boulevard from 21st Street to 15th Street.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Steve Groh will lead us to this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is the next phase of our Topeka Boulevard reconstruction. This will include road reconstruction and water main replacement with your approval tonight. We will look to start this project in June of this year with the completion in December of 2026. We held a public open house back on February 6, which was very well-attended, and looking for your approval to commence with this next phase of Topeka Boulevard.
Councilwoman Duncan?
What is the timeline of the intersection at 21st and Topeka? Because I only get asked that about every 10 minutes when I walk in here in public.
As often as we get asked as well. We were finally able to get some concrete poured last week, and the goal is to have that open yet this month.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor? Sort of follow-up on that, Congress, I'm counting on that. Will that 21st intersection be open while this project will go in, because my thinking is access to the Expo Center from the far side of town?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kel, there will be no road closures associated with this project. We're going to do it under traffic.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you. Just wanted to, was going to shoot that question to you again. No road closures, but it will be, there'll be one lane going each direction during the course of this project, right?
Correct.
So, just so everybody knows. Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Banks, second by Deputy Mayor, if you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
And Heller?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Move to action item D. Madam Plurk?
D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 841098, Phase 4, 501106, Phase 10, and 121022, Phase 1, for street and utility improvements on southeast 6th Avenue from Golden Avenue to Rice Road.
Okay. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Steve Groh, our Public Works Director, will lead us to this item.
Steve?
Mr. Mayor, this will be a mill and overlay with some full-depth patching, storm sewer repairs, and also some repairs to the bridge over Deer Creek. With your approval tonight, we'd be looking at starting this project in June of this year and completing in December of 2026. We are planning on holding a public open house on March 13 from 5:30 to 6:30 at Victory City Church, and we're looking for your permission to commence with this project.
I recognize Councilwoman Ortiz, she has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, this project is long and overdue. We've been waiting for a long time, so with that, I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilman Banks. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
And Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carries, we'll move to action item E. Madam Plurk?
E is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler recommending approval of project numbers 701039, 141037, Phase 1, 501081, Phase 27, 501107, Phase 2, 2911, 29, Phase 1, 281250, Phase 4, and 121005 for street improvements, utility improvements, traffic signal installation, and bridge repair on southeast 29th Street from Kansas Avenue to Adams Street.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Before I turn this one over to Steve, I also wanted to point out that one of the departmental goals for the CIP this year was to increase our communication with the public as we move these projects forward, even if we don't have schedules. And so earlier this week, between Communications and Public Works, we had a great press conference, and we pushed out maps of all the work that we'd be doing this year to include these five projects. So just wanted to point that out before I turn it over to Steve. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. Mr. Mayor, Governing Board, this project, a big portion of this project this year will be to replace the Box Culver Bridge over Butcher, on Butcher Creek, underneath the Burlington Northern Railroad Bridge. There'll also be some water main replacement and repairs going this year. Next year would be a mill and overlay with some concrete panel and curb and gutter replacements and the installation of a traffic signal at Fremont Avenue. With your approval and pending railroad permitting, we're hoping to start this project in May or June of this year and complete next summer. Looking for your support to commence with this project.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. More of a comment here, actually, two comments. First one's for Steve. We like to say Burlington Northern Santa Fe here.
Yes, sir. North country always be.
Just a personal preference. Little K-State math here, it looks like the five projects that we're approving tonight somewhere just south of $25 million. For those folks out there that complain that nothing ever happens on our streets, we're spending a lot of money and doing a lot of good things. I look at the number of streets that have been overlaid and other repair done to them in the last couple of years, particularly in anticipation of Polquency, and it's pretty amazing, as well as a lot of streets just in local neighborhoods. We're getting a lot done. $25 million is a lot of money for, it's a lot of projects for Steve's staff to manage. And I know they're often shorthanded, but they do a great job of that. We appreciate it. I know people, for the most part, don't really see it. They see the orange cones and the signs and get frustrated at the detours and all those things. But we are doing a lot of work to preserve our infrastructure. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, is a second from Councilwoman Ortiz. Is there a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad that Neil brought that out. And I would ask the citizens to also look at the location of these projects. A lot of them in Oakland, southeast, east Topeka. And again, we always get slammed where there's never anything done, Six and Golden. I mean, when I look at all these projects, I, it's ecstatic. And when I think about this last project that we're now talking about, there's been a bridge under the railroad track that has been broken. It's just, you know, people can just fall in the creek. So I'm ecstatic, and I'll accept that motion.
Steve?
A quick comment, this project also, Councilman Dobler, we're replacing the water main, which broke again last week. And that's work that a lot of people don't see when they go by these projects. It's also going to tie in two pressure zones for the utility department, which will help them manage the water system throughout the city much more efficiently.
Thank you for that addition and affirmation. Deputy Mayor?
Just kind of saying thank you for the hard work you all do. And then I know a lot of people sit there, and they, I've seen a lot lately, is we don't ever pick a good time to do a project. Well, it's kind of, we go off of what's priority, what's needed through the city, and sometimes that makes it a little bit of a jigsaw puzzle from going one side of town to the other. But if I remember right, we're up to the minute on Google Maps with our road closures, I believe. So we're, if you're trying to get across town and you're not sure exactly which roads are open or closed, pop up Google Maps, we're up to the minute on that, so it can make it a little easier trying to navigate around town.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank the committee who's done such a good work on all of their public infrastructure decisions because that was, we created that as a standing committee, and that's been one of the hardest-working committees, I think, that we've had, and it's really helped us move these projects like that. And having the committee members, Councilwoman Ortiz, Councilman Banks, and Councilman Dobler work these things in committee so that when they come to us, they're ready for us to vote on. So it's appreciated. So we have a motion and a second to approve, so again, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
And Ortiz?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. It's all good work. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to non-action items. We do have someone signed up to speak on this particular topic. If the clerk will bring it first.
Okay. A is a discussion regarding the 2025 Topeka Dreams Neighborhood Improvement Initiatives Program Award, Awardees Funding Recommendations.
Okay. Mr. City Manager? Well, we could, we can go ahead and visit. There's no action going to be taken.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Bianca Burnett, RCN County Engagement Coordinator, will lead us to this item.
Okay, Bianca?
Good evening, governing body members and Mayor. Thank you for having me this evening. Here to present the Topeka Dreams Neighborhood Investment Partnership Program. This is a collaboration between the City of Topeka and local neighborhood improvement associations, better known as our NIA's. The goal of this program is to improve neighborhood infrastructure, housing, and the overall quality of life for our residents. Priority community projects identified by our neighborhood improvement associations are incorporated into the city's capital improvement plan, the capital improvement budget, and the HUD CDBG funding priorities. These projects go through three stages of planning, design, and completion. This slide is an overview of the Dreams Initiative. There are several initiatives. So Dreams 1 is every two years, one active NIA is selected to receive up to 1.5 million in infrastructure improvements, 150,000 in necessary utility upgrades, which includes water, sanitary sewer or storm sewer, and up to 330,000 for housing rehabilitation and affordable housing investments. The Dreams 2 Housing Rehabilitation Program. Every two years, up to four active NIA's can receive funding for major housing rehabilitation within those neighborhoods, minor housing rehabilitation, voluntary demolitions, and infill housing. A total of 330,000 is available, and that funding is allocated on a first-come, first-served basis to qualified property owners within those neighborhoods. The Dreams 2 is our larger infrastructure neighborhood projects. And every two years, multiple larger projects are selected to receive between 100,000 and a million dollars for improvements, totaling 1.5 million in available funding. An additional 150,000 is allocated for utility funding. That's water, wastewater, stormwater utility projects that are in alignment with the larger infrastructure projects. And then the Dreams 3 Neighborhood Program is our annual mini-grants program. And those grants range from 1,000 to 50,000 with a total of 200,000 available. These funds support small infrastructure improvements, neighborhood beautification, and community building efforts. And this includes 140,000 typically from GO bonds or other city funding, and another 60,000 from CDBG funding. So tonight, I'll be presenting the Citizen Advisory Council's recommendation for the 2025 Dreams Program allocations. And we had a consultation meeting process. So from January to March of 2024, neighborhood leaders had the opportunity to meet with city staff from various departments to discuss their project ideas, ensure funding eligibility, and obtain cost estimates. In September of 2024, the NIA's submitted their preliminary applications, which were then reviewed by the city staff team for feasibility, budget estimates, and compliance with regulations. This is just an overview of the staff team that participated in those neighborhood consultation meetings. The team included city staff with specialized knowledge in infrastructure, community needs, and public projects. Each team member contributed project-specific requirements and eligibility criteria based on their area of expertise. Between September 13th and October 11th, NIA's submitted their applications. These applications were then, again, reviewed by city staff. And then from October 19th through February 5th of this year, eligible CAC or Citizen Advisory Council members reviewed and scored those applications. And on February 5th, the Citizen Advisory Council voted on the final funding recommendations for city council consideration. Those recommendations are as follows. So for Dreams 1, the historic Old Town neighborhood was recommended to receive the 1.5 million in infrastructure improvements, 150,000 for potential water, sanitary, and storm sewer upgrades, and up to 330,000 for housing rehabilitation and affordable housing investments. For Dreams 2, the Housing Rehab Program, the High Crest neighborhood was the only one to apply. So High Crest will receive up to 330,000 in housing rehabilitation funds for eligible property owners within the neighborhood. For the Dreams 2 major projects, basically during the February 5th Citizen Advisory Council meeting, the CAC reviewed 2.4 million in requested funding and was tasked with reducing those recommendations to the 1.5 million available. They proposed two options for the governing bodies' consideration. So option one, this option provides funds for sidewalk projects in High Crest, Historic Holiday Park, and North Topeka West contingent upon property owner consent. Full funding is also recommended for an East Topeka North Street project and Valley Park's Shunga Drive Mill and Overlay Project. It is important to note that the Dreams Program is a neighborhood-driven initiative, and securing property owner consent is required for projects on property that is not owned by the city. This includes sidewalk projects where the city does not have public right-of-way, and it's crucial to obtain consent from residents for projects that impact their properties to ensure that they are informed and supportive of the neighborhood initiatives. So that is option one. Option two, if the sidewalk projects are not approved, funding will be directed to the East Topeka North Street project, as mentioned, and the three street Valley Park projects. A third option has been proposed by the Historic Holiday Park NIA, and that would be to waive the requirement for obtaining signatures from impacted property owners for sidewalk projects based on the argument that these improvements enhance community progress and safety and should therefore be considered public improvements. I would like to note that for the three neighborhoods who submitted applications for sidewalks, Historic Holiday Park is a sidewalk replacement project, and those sidewalks are in the public right-of-way. The Public Works Department has clarified that property owner consent is only required for replacement of brick sidewalks, as the city will be replacing, when they replace sidewalks, they replace with concrete. For the North Topeka West project that is in consideration, Public Works has determined that new sidewalk could be installed in public right-of-way. Additionally, permanent public easements may be, may need to be acquired in front of one private property on Fillmore and one on Gordon. These assessments would be made during the design process. So that is basically when that would be determined as to if those public easements would be needed. For the High Crest project, there are several locations where permanent public easement will need to be acquired to install new sidewalks. The Citizen Advisory Council voted to approve option one contingent on city council approval. If option one is not approved, option two will serve as the alternative recommendation. Additionally, option one may be revised by the governing body to include option three. However, as noted, it is important to note that the property owner consent for easements will still be required where the city does not have public right-of-way, as well as for projects where brick sidewalks would need to be replaced. For Dreams 3, the Citizen Advisory Council proposed awarding 45,000 for the Central Highland Park Southeast 21st Street Crosswalk Project and 44,520 for the Valley Park Southwest Plasse Avenue Mill and Overlay Project. They also voted to use any unspent Dreams 3 funding as contingency for both Dreams 2 and Dreams 3, excluding the CDBG portion of that funding. This slide outlines the tentative timeline and funding schedule for each of the Dreams Program initiatives, starting in 2025. So Dreams 1, 2025, is the planning year. So funding would, would actually begin in 2026 with design and final completion of the projects expected in 2028. For the Dreams 2 Housing Rehab, funding would begin in 2026 and continue until funds are exhausted or there are no more eligible property applicants. And the Dreams 2 Major Improvement Projects, funding would begin with design in 2025 and final completion expected by no later than 2027. Dreams 3 Mini Grants Program, funding will begin in 2025 and continue through completion in 2026. In summary, the proposed funding recommendations are as follows. Dreams 1, Historic Old Town, would receive up to 1.5 million in infrastructure, 150,000 in utility infrastructure, and 330,000 for housing. Dreams 2 Housing Rehab, High Crest, will receive up to 330,000 for housing rehabilitation. Dreams 2, there are two funding options for your consideration and final approval, along with a third option to fund option one without requiring preliminary property owner consent for the sidewalk projects. However, consent will still be required in cases where the city does not have public right-of-way or for the replacement of brick sidewalks with concrete. Dreams 3, funding for Central Highland Park and Valley Park projects with any unspent funds designated as contingency for both Dreams 2 and Dreams 3. In conclusion, I want to thank you for your time and consideration of the recommendations presented here this evening. I now yield the floor for any questions.
Any questions for Bianca? Deputy Mayor?
How do you go about getting consent for those sidewalks?
So typically, consent for our Dreams applications, we require a letter or an email from the property owner basically stating that they are in support of the project and in support of the use of their property for that project.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Bianca, just for my clarification, what, what are the, thank you. What are the parameters that makes you an active NIA?
So active NIA's, basically, they have NIA officers, so president typically. They may have a vice president, a secretary, or treasurer, although those are necessarily, are not necessarily requirements. But they are active in that they have regular meetings. They are doing regular activities within their neighborhood. And a majority of the neighborhoods that applied are active in the Citizen Advisory Council as well.
So the number of attendance is not a consideration, nor?
That is not something that the city would consider. Each NIA is governed by their own bylaws. And so we would have to look at bylaws to see if there's anything that would be different for each, each particular NIA.
School sidewalks, are those repair of existing sidewalks? Or are we looking at new sidewalks?
So for the High Crest School Sidewalk Project, that would be installation of new sidewalks. There are currently no sidewalks in that area.
Okay. Thank you, Bianca.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we'll maybe hear a little more from our conferees as well. I sat in on the first two CAC meetings where this was discussed. And I really do support the alternative. When we do cross-town sidewalks, like where we're doing them on major street projects now, whether it's on Wanamaker or 12th Street or wherever, we just do them. You know, they get, they get installed in the public right-of-way, and the city does appropriate notices. But we, we do move forward, and, and I would hate to have, if there's a difficulty of a neighborhood person getting hold of somebody who owns property in these proposed areas, I would not want that to hold back the projects that, that they proposed and that certainly are worthy in the case of, of the neighborhoods that are wanting to replace sidewalks. I, I do support Holiday Park's request. My understanding is that in that neighborhood, the problem is you've got some out of, some ghost, ghost property owners that people weren't able to reach. Yet, for the safety of a sidewalk that goes all the way from end to end of a block, to have them all repaired or replaced is, is, is important. I appreciate the protection of the brick sidewalks. Other than that, when you think about it, if, if a property owner said that they wouldn't, didn't want you to do their sidewalk replacement, the reason they're asking to do it is because it's non-compliant. It's broken up. It's not ADA compliant anyway. At which point, that property would be eligible to get turned in through C Click Fix, have the city engineering department come out, write it up, and tell them they have to fix it and, and go through an enforcement process. It's a way better deal for that property owner to, to participate in the, in the process. And, and frankly, if, if they, if they really don't want to and don't want to repair it themselves in their own way, they're just going to be subject to the city enforcement anyway. So it's a shame to go through all that extra roundabout. So I, I will be supporting the, the waiver on option three. And I have one other comment, if I may, about the housing funds. Certainly, I'm sure High Crest can use all the rehab money in the coming year for, for properties in the High Crest neighborhood. But often, the neighborhoods are not able with the guidelines that we have. If you put a whole 330,000 in one neighborhood in one year, it's difficult to have, find that many homeowners who are ready that particular year to step forward and, okay, having the city's help. So I really, I think that, that they're looking at it, but I would sure like to see those cut loose so that people in any neighborhood who need that substantial rehab on their house can get in line. Sometimes, we, we used to do it that way years ago. Sometimes people would have to wait a year or two. But instead of lots of door knocking, which the neighborhoods are still always welcome to do, it lets, you know, sometimes it takes a while to talk Mr. or Mrs. So-and-so into accepting that assistance, getting their kids to support them, and getting that paperwork done. So for future, not, not for this year, but for future, I'd like to, like us to consider opening that, that program up. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to commend staff. I've been sitting in on a lot of the meetings and talking to staff, and they have done a superb job of helping the members, the NIA members, Neighborhood Improvement Association members, on filling out their grants, getting their paperwork done. If it's wrong, looking at it, taking them by the hand and showing them what we're expecting out of them. And, and I think that's, that's, we've come a long way in, in doing that. I'd also like to thank the CAC members who are volunteers that put in that extra time to, to move this process forward, a process that they voted on several years ago. And I'd like to thank them as well for, for moving forward. So if you don't see an NIA in there, or you're wondering where that, were their voices, or they did, it's, it's mostly it's because they probably didn't feel something out. And I know in east Topeka, we've been really trying to push for it because I just like And I know in East Topeka, we've been really trying to push for, because I'd just like to encourage the NIAs to move forward with those grants and fill them out and submit them, because you're losing money. And so again, I just want to thank Bianca, Monique, staff. You know, I know there was a street in Braxton saying, we need to do it through the grants, and he was right, you know. So again, I just, the Dreams grant, so I just wanted to say thank you for their hard work.
Okay. Seeing nothing further. Bianca, thank you very much. And we do have someone signed up today to speak on this, Shamika King Sims.
Thank you, Mayor.
Want to check and make sure she's not on Zoom. Shamika King Sims. Okay.
Did I take her place?
Sorry, sir. We have a procedure.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
I just want to point out that our volunteer to speak is the author of the letter from Historic Holiday Park NIA requesting Option Three. So they're here if anybody has any questions of Holiday Park.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Non-Auction Item Six B. Madam Clerk.
B is a discussion regarding exempting certain requirements in KSA 41710 concerning distances at retail liquor stores in relation to schools, colleges, or churches.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body, Amanda Stanley, your city attorney. Lead us to this item.
Hi, thank you, Mr. City Manager. So here today before you is something you don't get very often. This is a request to waive the requirements that a liquor store not be present within 200 feet of the school. Generally, these go to the Alcohol Beverage Control Unit. This time, they flagged it and sent it back and said, hey, FYI, the city council has a mechanism in state law that you can waive this restriction if it's in particular areas of our city, which ABC designated this area as part of the commercial core. It's considered a commercial core for them. So since you guys have not done this in as long as any staff can remember, in the clerk's office, we didn't know what your opinion would be, so we brought it before you. And today, you have the owner here, Mr. Butler, and his attorney of University Liquor, to explain why they are asking for this ordinance.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rod Schneider, Mr. Butler's lawyer. And the city attorney aptly described it. He wanted to put in a liquor store in the location where University Flowers used to be, close to Washburn. He went and started the process, and then ABC flagged it. Oh, sorry. He went and, ABC flagged it and said, you're within 200 feet of a school. You know, you have to go to the city council and see if they'd be willing to grant you an exemption or a waiver to the distance requirement. And then I went and worked with Mr. Mullen and Mr. Hall, and that's how then we got on the agenda and before you. Basically, what Mr. Butler wants is just simply to have a small liquor store and have a business in what's a growing prosperous area, I mean, with the Casey's coming in across the street and the existing businesses in the neighborhood.
Sir, could you like to speak?
Yeah, pretty much sums it up. We are just looking to thrive in that neighborhood, and, you know, I think we're just a few feet short of the 200-foot rule, and it's just, you know, we want to, like I said, grow in that community, that all the new stores, new businesses that are going in, Casey's and stuff, that's just across the street from us. And I think it'd be a great place to start a business at. So we've began the process, and we're actually almost remodeled now. And so we've been working on it all year this year. As soon as the building was vacant, started remodeling it, and it's going to look great. It's going to be a nice, nice place. So hopefully, you know, everything moves forward.
And the zoning is already C2, which allows for a liquor store. And historically, that area has had businesses and is kind of a point of commerce.
Any questions, Deputy Mayor?
So you mentioned the Casey's going in. To your knowledge, are they going to be able to sell alcohol across the street?
Casey's should have beer products. I don't think they have liquor or alcohol other than beer.
Because I just look at that, that's almost closer to Land than it is Washburn, and any child can walk into a gas station like that.
Right.
The liquor store is more, you know, you're, you can kick a teenager out right off the bat.
Sure. ID is required for every purchase with us, so.
So that's, you know, I look at that aspect of things as a little bit, you're that close in one aspect is, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
To that end, part of the reason there won't be an issue with Casey's is they'll have, it's a silly Kansas liquor law, they'll have a CMB license, they'll actually get to sell up to 6%, but CMB licenses don't apply to this law. I'm not going to have an issue with this for a couple of reasons. There's a restaurant right across the street from Washburn that has liquor licenses. There's two of them, actually. There's another liquor store on the other corner that may or may not, probably grandfather name, but may or may not already be 200 feet. Casey's is going to have a CMB license. If this was an elementary school, middle school, or high school, this would be an easy no for me, but this is a college in an area that already has liquor license around it. But that, to your CMB question, different licenses have different requirements and stuff.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that thought, the reason I'm going to be saying no or not voting for this is because we already have a ton of options around there. Having liquor stores in every single corner doesn't help people as you may think it is. I'm not against business, and I want you to have a thriving business. But I just don't want to saturate any certain area with a bunch of liquor stores unnecessarily.
Right.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I will support it. I think it almost made me chuckle. I mean, 200 feet must be to the border of Washburn University, but the closest dorm or classroom building or administrative building is probably at least 600 feet away from that particular building. Also, not really terribly long ago, for those of us who are around before the College Hill development went in, there was a liquor store right there and had been for a long time at 16th Street, where Washburn and Lane come together, even had a drive-through window and did a reasonable business, and so that we have not had that amenity there since College Hill was developed. But this would be a small replacement for something that we had, so thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. I too will not be supporting this. I hope that you can, you know, have success wherever else that you want a business. I think it's a poor place for a business to be. I don't think that we need, as Councilman Miller was saying, saturation. There are so many places to drink around that area. We know college kids drink. We know we can't keep alcohol away from them, but, you know, there's plenty of other places, in my opinion, you know, to have a liquor store rather than an already overly saturated area. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
It's kind of, I think, a little odd that we're looking at it as over saturation, because we don't do this with any other business. We don't say, oh, there's already five t-shirt businesses in this area, we're not going to open, we're not going to allow another t-shirt business to open up here. I understand this is liquor, this is more of a, you know, in-depth situation, but to sit there and say, oh, we can't have something in a certain area because it already exists there, doesn't allow for, you know, the open market to dictate what works. I've said it for a while that we sometimes have an oversaturation of certain things. Coffee shops, for one thing. I feel like we have a new coffee shop opening every week on every corner, and we have, as the city, have not done anything to stop all these coffee shops right now, but it's one of those things of, just because this contains alcohol, which I believe is actually safer than, like I meant, the instance with Casey's, Casey's is closer to Land, and any child can walk into Casey's, go over to liquor, go over to the beer, grab a beer, shove it in their backpack, and walk out the door. Liquor store is a little different. You have a middle school kid walk in the door, whoever's working there, they're like, get the hell out. So just to sit there and say, something already exists there, to not allow something to go in there, just because, we don't do that with any other business in town. So that argument there is a little suspect to me, just to sit there and say, now, if it's something historic that meant something, you know, I could see that, but just to sit there and say no because we already have one there, I don't see that argument, because we don't do that with any other business. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Although I respect Deputy Mayor's comments, people don't get DUIs from t-shirts, and they certainly don't do it from coffee. We have a lot of coffee spots, we could add some more, sure. But the big picture issue with having saturated liquor stores, especially in areas that aren't, that are very susceptible to alcohol being a detriment to their lives, the more access to it, the easier it is for people to do it. I'm not saying that they shouldn't be able to drink alcohol in their adult life, but we don't need more places for more people to dive and go down longer rabbit holes of addiction. That's just my thought. Thank you.
To my knowledge, is there any other liquor store within two, three blocks of your location?
That's kind of what I was, what I was thinking. The only liquor store is College Hill Liquor, which is a drive-through only, and it's in 21st and Washburn.
Down by Ichabod.
Yeah, by the Ichabod. That's the only other store to purchase liquor, like, or, you know, wine or anything like that. There's several establishments to drink. Even on the corner, I think they have alcohol at the coffee shop, right there at 17th and Washburn on the corner. Believe they sell alcohol there. Obviously, there's Margarita Halesco's, there's different, you know, Ichabod. But as far as purchasing alcohol to take home, that's the closest thing is College Hill Liquor. The next closest thing is Off-A-Gage. Also 12th Street, there's a small liquor store on 12th Street off of Washburn, that there's nothing else in the area at all.
Well, I can remember, as Councilwoman Hiller talked about in the past, when College Hill had quite a few drinking establishments, I never heard any concern there about the concentration of drinking establishments. I mean, wherever you have it, responsibility comes into play for the people who go down there and what they do with those access. You know, I'm, at this point, not going to say I would vote against it, but I'm a little concerned that, that maybe we, as a governing body, aren't asking the right questions about how there may be an impact in that neighborhood, if any. Making assumptions, I think, is something that would be a fault for us in trying to make a decision.
Yes, sir. I understand.
I appreciate the fact that you've brought it forward. I'm sure there'll be more discussion, and tonight, there is going to be a vote on it, and we do have somebody to speak to this item, so that might help the governing body as they consider this.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, it comes down to 20 feet is what it really, if it was, if the building was sat 20 feet further, it wouldn't even be an issue. So that's, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Any further questions for that? Okay. Seeing none, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And to this item, we have signed up to speak Danielle Twemlow. Danielle?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to express some concerns today about this development and explain why such an addition may not serve the best interests of our community. So why is this important? According to Kansas Health Matters, one of our leading entities that compiles health data from across the state, studies have shown that neighborhoods with a high density of alcohol outlets are associated with higher rates of violence, regardless of other community characteristics such as poverty and age of residence. High alcohol outlet density has been shown to be related to increased rates of drinking and driving, motor vehicle-related, pedestrian injuries, and child abuse neglect. In addition, liquor store sales frequently sell food, other goods that are unhealthy and expensive. Setting rules that mandate minimum distances between alcohol outlets limit the number of new licenses in areas that already have a high number of outlets, and closing down outlets that repeatedly violate liquor laws can help control and reduce liquor store density. So the quote as to why we look at this, why is this even a data point, right? So under our kind of deep analysis of community health data over the last year in conjunction with the CDC and the National Association of City and County Health Officials, this statement was reiterated in key strategic planning efforts. One task that our Community Inspired Violence Intervention Coalition was given was to identify policies, ordinances, and regulations that harm violence reduction strategies and ones that are helpful to violence reduction strategies. One of them was a alcohol density ordinance, which we do not have. We're seeing the consequences with not having these mandates in place. Our community has double the national average of liquor stores within our community, at nineteen point seven per 100,000 people compared to 10.9 nationally, also nearly double from this, the average at the state level. At the same time, Shawnee County's violent crime rate is 75% higher than the national average and 50% higher than the state average, with the surrounding neighborhood of this liquor store being the highest violent crime rate in our community, according to data we received from TPD. So the neighborhood has already faced historical disenfranchisement, a failed Tiff district, food insecurity, and disproportionate social determinative health inequities. Adding another liquor store will only deepen these struggles, and knowing that key stakeholders were likely not even engaged in this conversation, because we didn't have to rezone, so those steps that we would do to engage community wasn't needed. So just on the drive over here, I went ahead and picked up the phone and contacted New Dawn Rehab Service, which is less than two blocks away from this, less than two blocks. If we go a few blocks the other way, we have another addiction entity that's the other direction. And picking up the phone, just driving over here, Nancy answered and gave me permission to share our conversation, which was that she was not aware that this was potentially going in, and obviously, they would not ever advocate for additional liquor stores, but through our conversation, had a real concern about people who are coming and getting those services that are constantly driving by, and that being a trigger. We have two of those on that street alone, where people are trying to get help and assistance. It's just something they would be driving by pretty frequently. We're also going to have these students who are nearby who have more access, which we know is only going to, by all health data, by all numbers that we ever have, will increase that likelihood. So this is a neighborhood that we have been focusing on improving the social determinants of health factors, and this would not be a healthy addition to the community, and I certainly hope that we engage more members to have that discussion about whether it's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That is all of our agenda, except for the public comment portion, and we have two people signed up. Ms. Lassiter?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. I don't have a very good voice, but the little voice I have, I'm going to try to use it. Bless you tonight, and if my people, which are called by my name, would humble themselves, pray, seek God's face, and seek wise counsel, then we can hear from heaven, because I believe God will speak. But thank you again for another opportunity. Thank you for what's been shared, Social Services, CINC, and various other groups that are helping with our public safety are relevant and important. But tonight, I want to specifically talk about our discrimination lawsuits that's taken place in this city. As I've read several articles, I read the one online, I was real concerned about the three female officers who filed a suit in, I believe, 2023, and it was on a sexism, discrimination with the police department. Taxpayers' dollars were used to fight that. And then taxpayers' dollars were used again to review what those attorneys had already filed. And anytime I'm wrong or make a mistake, I have no problem with you saying to me, Ms. Lassiter, that's incorrect information, I'll walk it back through again. And then the third one is that the officer who was removed from the $500,000 settlement of two of those officers, she has now filed a retaliation lawsuit against our city. And our city attorney has allowed attorneys to represent at three levels. Every level, our taxpayers' dollars have been paid for these lawsuits. 2023, almost over a million dollars, because all the legal fees were not included. And then now we're embarking upon 2024, where we're getting retaliation lawsuits and some others that are also listed, and they're going to be about a million dollars. And that's $2 million with us having budget crunch. And that's $2 million with us having budget crunch, budget cut. I believe our attorney may be well-meaning, but recently, she has filed an unnecessary protection order against an attorney and the mother of the child of Lowry, in the Lowry case, because it took them two years, they ingratiated her, they pursued it, and yet still, she said, well, sue us. I thought, with such arrogance, you telling someone they should sue you? Our city does not need another lawsuit. However, that forced this mother into a civil suit, which she will proceed with. So, I believe, public believes, we're coming with a public statement and a public alert that we would like to see the sanctions rescinded. We believe that that was a scheme, and it was to deflect the public from the true, real issue of a young man who was murdered and killed by police officers, just that simple. At some point, it seems that we should have some mediators, we should have some negotiators, we should have some intercessors, somebody that would step up and say, these are discrimination lawsuits. Why? We know that sexism and racism are Siamese twins. And this is getting to be really hideous for the city of Topeka to have so many discrimination suits. Now, once again, I want to go back, and I'll probably run out of a minute, but I'll go back in a minute. As an administrator, I was told, I was excited about being an administrator, and then I was told, but you're there to clean up. You are here to clean up in this city what is harming and damaging our community. Now, those persons that were in my building, love them dearly, they had, were excellent academicians, and many of them were very professional people, but they did not fit the population of our school. So, I had to make a decision. And the entire administration had to make a decision. And that is to retire. I was told to have some persons retire. Can I have two minutes? Or one minute?
Well, you got a minute anyway. We've got a late start.
I've got a good, thank you very much. Won't take me that long. We were told to retire, go to some folks and say, you probably need to retire. Your day is up for working with this group of people. Or resign legitimately, knowing that you've made some very poor decisions, or be fired. So, I think that our city attorney, with all of the accolades that have been given, in this case, with so many damaging lawsuits, is costing us too much money. And it's damaging to our city and our community. And to me, and to others, and many others, there is a concern because we've been given treacherous decisions that are being made by the city attorney and unwise legal advice. So the recent sanctions that have been pursued with a protective order was out of order.
Ms. Lassiter? You were given the extra time because the clerk didn't start the clock when you started.
So I was given extra time.
How much time would you want?
I don't need anything but a minute. And I just felt, I don't...
Okay. Motion to allow another minute and second?
Another minute, a second is fine.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, go ahead, Ms.
An insult, an injury to our community, and something needs to be done. The protective order needs to be removed because it was an unnecessary attack that appeared to be retaliation, because these people pursued for two years just to get the truth. The video is the truth. Bless you.
Thank you. Okay, the second person we have signed up is Cynthia O'Neill.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to share with you. And what I will share is based upon my personal opinion. Our tax dollars are being wasted by the city attorney by forcing cases to be brought into the court. The first one of which comes to mind is the forcing of the hand of Denning's, the attorney of record, in the Lowry case, to sue for the release of a police video. The video could have been released upon the request of the family before it even went to court, but it was denied as not being in the interest of the public. But why wouldn't it be? One of our community members was killed by the police, and I think that that is of the interest of the public. Additional taxpayer dollars are now being wasted in effort to sanction Attorney Lassiter Saunders and Ms. Duncan, the plaintiff in the case. Why? The video was released to the attorneys of record, the Denning's, who inadvertently gave the video to Lassiter Saunders without sharing the knowledge of the protective order being in place. The Denning's have acknowledged that, and in my opinion, this was an inadvertent misunderstanding. We spend our tax dollars on going to court to sanction these two individuals, a mother of a child who has lost their father, and an attorney who's actually trying to help the family. Is the city attorney retaliating because it was not her desire to have the video released? That sounds personal to me in nature and not a legal matter. Our tax dollars should not be spent on what appears to be a personal vendetta. Tax dollars should be saved, excuse me, tax dollars could have been saved had the video been released when it was initially requested. The city manager, to my understanding, excuse me, had the discretion and the authority to release it, but refused to. I am told that's the advice of the city attorney. Why? Does she not want it released? The real victim is actually deceased. A man with only a wrench in his hand was shot 34 times by the police. The video reveals that. Had the video been released when requested, as a public record, all of the taxpayer dollars that have been spent on petitions, filings, motions, et cetera, could have been put to a much more beneficial use for the public. Let's just say repair the potholes, which has really tore my car up, and to train the police how to deal with and engage in a mental health crisis so that a life would not have to be lost. Did the city attorney share with you the declarations of Attorney Lassiter Saunders and of plaintiff Ms. Duncan, and the response, so that you could actually know what happened? I implore you, city council members, to individually review that information to see how your tax dollars are being wasted in court. My time may have, maybe a minute or so?
You should have a minute.
Okay. You have a city attorney who has caused the city of Topeka to spend our tax dollars on efforts which appears to be retaliation. Additional taxpayer dollars need not be wasted on sanctioning Attorney Saunders and plaintiff Ms. Duncan, especially since none of the protected content was actually released, to my understanding. There was no malice on the part of Attorney Lassiter Saunders nor Ms. Duncan. Did the city attorney tell you that the judge issued an order on February 25th asking the defendant, the city, to let the court know what they want to do in regard to the sanctions, considering the fact that an explanation has been provided? We, taxpayers, are requesting that you, the actual governing body, which you are, the city council, to do the right thing by withdrawing the sanctions. We also request that you look into the dismissal of the city attorney, who wasted taxpayer money in what appeared to be efforts of retaliation or vendetta.
Do you require more time? Because your time is up.
Okay, I have just maybe one minute, just one minute? Or even a half a minute? It's just one sentence here.
Let's not vote from one sentence. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Why didn't she want the tape released? And why, who was she really protecting while wasting the taxpayer dollars? Just asking. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Those are all the persons signed up for public comment. We'll move to announcements. We'll start with Councilwoman Valdivia-Acala.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, whoa, I didn't realize my camera was off. Just telling folks to be careful.
You're on mute.
Can you hear me?
Try again.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me?
We can now, yes.
Okay, okay. So just tell folks to be careful tonight with this possible storm that's coming in. Take care of each other, don't go out on the roads, and that is all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Banks?
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Just reiterate what Councilwoman Valdivia-Acala said about be safe on the streets. It'll be about 10 o'clock to midnight when it starts freezing. We already have a bunch of rain on the ground, so please be careful out there. Also, congratulations to all of our area athletes that participated in state this past weekend. Then we have some other sports going into their playoff seasons coming up, so good luck to all of our area teams that are going to state, and then all the ones that have just wrapped up their seasons that did well. Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Nothing from me, sir. Thank you very much.
Councilman Dobbs?
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to say something, even though I know we all want to get home, but I don't think it's any secret that I've made a decision not to pursue this council seat this fall. I will not run for reelection. I was appointed to this seat in 2019, and for that, I thank the mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilwoman Hiller, among others, for their support. I did, at that time, want to run and win, which I did, 70%. Thank you.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Just saying. And I've had a great time. But I said back then, I thought one term would be plenty, plus the two additional years. And as I've approached 2025, it's become clear, I mean, you have to have a passion, you have to have the desire to be here, to do the work. And at some point, you start feeling that you just don't have that anymore. And that's where I am. So, I've got 10 months, try to do as much good as I can in that 10-month period of time. I've made a commitment to the city manager to work hard on the budget and hopefully help craft something that is sustainable. There's a few things I'd like to see completed by the end of my term, and I'll work hard on those. I would like to, at least by December if possible, be able to show up to a council meeting and not look at 15 storage containers taking up the parking around City Hall. So I hope that project is completed by that time. And I'll have more to say as it gets nearer to the end of this term. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. And I won't go into a whole lot of detail, but before we move on to the next council person, I just want to thank you for being a very good member of this council and a very good friend to the city of Topeka. And we're going to work you hard for the next 10 months. But I know you're up for it, and your knowledge is, it's hard to match your experience and knowledge that you have with the city. So, thank you, sir.
Are you going to have a applause for one guy?
Well, he's not dead, he's not dead yet. You kind of get that when I make my announcement, it's like, well, where's he going? Well, nowhere for 10 months. I mean, it's not like we're dying, we're just moving on to the next phase of our life. Councilman Duncan?
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hope?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. One last thing I just want to comment on. I had the privilege this morning of spending some time at Loman Hill Elementary, reading to a group of, I think it was fifth graders. And as usual, you know, they want to do an introduction, get a bio of you and stuff, but I didn't do that. I told them, I get tired of talking about myself. I just soon talked to the students and asked them if they had any questions, because how often do they get a chance to ask questions of the mayor? And believe me, those kids had a lot of questions. In fact, we had to squeeze in the reading of the book, and then after that, they had more questions. And eventually, the principal had to say, okay, that's it, one more question, and we got to be on. But I was impressed, at their young age, how aware they are of what's going on in our country. There were a lot of questions about the federal government, our current president, how they're going to be affected. So these kids are paying attention. I bring this up because I want parents to know, the schools are doing a good job of keeping in touch with their kids, and we need the parents to support their kids. And when these kids ask you those same questions at home, give them a good, thoughtful, educated answer. And that's what these kids deserve. Again, if you ever get a chance to do some of these things, I know throughout the year you get to be, what is it, principal for a day and stuff? Those are other good opportunities to interact with the youth of our city. So I would encourage you to continue to support our local schools and our public school system. And think about what you say around your kids, because they're listening. So, there is no need for an executive session, no further business come before this body. We are adjourned.